Just three years from now. I'll now call the order of the May meeting of the City of Oxford Planning Commission, Commissioner, as you have the agenda before you. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Sorry.
All in favor? We don't have to ask any virtual votes, that's correct. All right. I hope you've had a chance to look over the minutes, are there any changes or additions to the minutes from the April meeting? All right, is there a motion to approve the minutes from the April meeting?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
No.
All right, minutes are approved. Ben, do we have a staff report?
I just have one quick item to announce right now, and I guess it's with a bit of a heavy heart that I've been informed by Mr. Michael Johnson that next month will be his last meeting with the Planning Commission. He's taken a job in Olive Branch, and so he's going to be relocating up there, and will be coaching some football up there for their high school. And so we're happy for you, we're sad to see you go, but we're more than anything appreciative for your time and service to the community of Oxford.
Yeah, I second that. Congratulations on the job.
Thank you.
And if you ever find yourselves needing to sit in on a three-hour public meeting, you're always welcome.
I know the planning director up there, so if you need me to put in a word. But thank you, that's it.
Yeah, thank you, Michael. All right. There is a case that was administratively approved, please just take note of case number 2939. We have two cases on the consent agenda, case number 2952, a request for a variance from a traditional neighborhood residential side yard setback, and case number 2953, a request for site plan approval for the Collinade Crossing property at 1681 James Kinnon's Drive. If there are no requests to remove anything from the consent agenda, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Is there a second, all in favor of approving the consent agenda? All right. That takes us to our first public hearing for case number 2954. Sumner Abraham has filed requests for A, a variance from Section 2.6.3, traditional estate residential front yard build-to-line maximum, and B, a variance from Section 5.8.3.1, neighborhood conservation district standards, submittal elements required for property located at 201 Longest Road.
I'll tackle both of these at the same time, but A, I think you're familiar with that type of request, we've had a few of these over the last year or two. B is a little bit different, but we'll get into the specifics in a minute on that. This property is at the corner, it's a corner lot at Longest and Cullen Road, it measures about a half an acre, and it's also in the Conservation Overlay District. The applicant is working with an architect who's also here as are the applicants, and they're doing a renovation to the existing home, however, it does require two variances, one for the proximity of the home, and then the other for the architectural style for the overlay district. And so the proposed building, it's the front yard setbacks, as you guys might remember, in the Conservation Overlay District, they're really determined by the planning director, and so we try to be, try to maintain a rhythm, right? And so we're trying to maintain that building line along that portion of the street. So generally speaking, we look at the adjacent properties and, you know, set that line of not going closer than one and not farther back than the other, and kind of gives you a minimum and a maximum, so that way you can maintain that rhythm. The home is, at the current property, measures about 72 feet nine inches from the curb, and it is the closest home on the north side of the street. The adjacent home is 78 feet six inches, so in this instance, the applicant is proposing to come forward or closer to the street by five feet seven inches. The applicant states that the owners and the designers are trying to keep the elements of the 1950s modern ranch style and the existing topography, and that the site being on a corner, having two front yard setbacks prevents the expansion east and west, or on the east and west sides of the home. The application notes that many of the homes on the south side of Longest are closer to the street than the subject property, and that they are less than 70 feet from the curb off of the road. And so the application does have letters of support from several neighbors in the vicinity, but as is often the case with these types of requests, just because we made the, you know, the interpretation of where it needs to sit, staff recommends denial of that request. But we do have here, if the commission does find that this is appropriate and granting the variance, that we do have one condition of approval, and that is so that the variances for the plan is submitted. Now, the other is a little bit different in that the Conservation Overlay District was established to preserve and protect the development patterns for the areas in and around the Oxford Historic Urban Center, and some of the areas in the Neighborhood Conservation Overlay District are in local historic districts, and those properties are subject to the city's design guidelines and review by the respective commission. In this instance, the applicants are proposing modifications and additions to the home. The proposal indicates that the home will have a similar architectural style and presence from Longest Road than it currently does, right now, but they are, you know, they're trying to keep that ranch-style look, and, but the lot parameters and the constraints are unique and don't lend well to the traditional expansion without losing that character of the home. And so the rear portions of the home do have a more modern architectural style, but it's different in style with the surrounding neighborhood. The rear elevations will likely not be visible from Longest, but because it is a corner lot, as you're traveling south from Cullen, you will be able to see, at various times of the year, because there is some existing vegetation, you will be able to see that portion of the facade. Staff is not opposed to this design, especially because it still maintains its 1950s ranch style feel from Longest, but it is considerably different than anything that we've ever had from a request standpoint inside the Conservation Overlay District, and so we felt that it would be appropriate to bring this before the commission for y'all's consideration, and also to allow the public to speak on that. At the time that we were speaking with the applicant and their architect, we didn't know what the neighborhood or the neighbors were, how they were feeling about it, but we have received nothing but support for this request, have not heard anything, I don't know if there's anybody in the public that's here to speak on it, but we have not heard anything otherwise. And so staff does recommend approval for this variance as it's submitted. As I mentioned, the applicants are here, as is their architect, and happy to answer any questions, and I'm sure they would as well.
Thank you, Ben. Are there any questions for the applicant from the commission?
I have one, Ben, and kind of in looking at what the report states, it's more as 5.8, 4.4, and looking at that, and then what you said about the houses on the opposite side of the street, I guess, is, and in looking at the, I guess, the code section, says we're supposed to maintain the continuity of the neighbor, but it looks like we're trying to maintain the continuity of that side of the street. I mean, does it, does it matter if, you know, if everything's different on one side of the street than the other?
Yeah, I think, it's a good question, and it's something that we, you know, I mean, it does require some design flexibility at times or interpretation. We try to maintain that on the street level, you know, and in instances, especially with redevelopments, we, you know, a lot of times we're seeing scrapes and rebuilds, a lot of, you know, brand-new construction inside like Avon Acres, or Piers, or, you know, some of the areas just, just on the fringes of, you know, where we're at right now. And in those instances, a lot of times, we just set it as where the existing home is, because, and often is the case, they were all built pretty consistently, you know, but what we're also trying to prevent is having that one that builds too close to the street, and then it completely disrupts that rhythm, the rhythm of the neighborhood. So, you know, when you look at this, this is the closest, the closest on that side of the street, if there was something that would help balance out that rhythm, if you looked at the south side of the street, you can actually see, it kind of varies a little bit, so I think closer to Cullen, it's maybe 45 or, you know, 50 feet somewhere in there, and then it kind of drips back a little bit, and then it kind of comes up, and so you could make an interpretation, and sometimes we do, that it's okay to get as close as this one, that's maybe three or four doors down. There's just, this one's a little difficult.
Other questions? Would the applicant like to speak? Please come forward and state your name.
Ben, thank you. My name is Roy Decker, Dubal Decker Architects.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Roy Decker, Dubal Decker Architects, and I'm here representing Sumner and Sarah Abraham on this application. Thank you for your consideration. As you know, an overlay district is really designed to help establish and maintain the character of a street, or a block, or a neighborhood, and we're very much trying to respect the ordinance and make very minor moves here to both allow the family to develop this house and stay in Oxford and really spend some money here, they love the street, love the location. But it's a tough site, the east side is constrained, and the west side is constrained. So, the existing house, as it orders the neighborhood, we're not changing, that existing dimension relative to its direct neighbor is the same. What we're asking is to allow us to come forward five feet towards the intersection, which allows us to make a generous porch and get a bedroom in the house for the children, it's really kind of getting it all in there. But the generous porch is really an additive quality to the street, so it's a big enough porch to have rocking chairs and have the family sit on the front porch, and really take advantage of the front yard. So, on the intersection side, in the intersection, directly across the street, we're mirroring the setback, so the house directly across the street is about the same dimension back from what we're proposing. So as Ben said, the streets kind of narrow as they get to the intersection, and then they make the corner. So really, we are aligning with that stepping line a little bit to maintain the character. So we are asking for permission to move five feet, really for a porch, and to get that extra, to get that bedroom and squeeze that house in that corner. On the, on the west side, we're stepping the house back, so the question about the style change has to do with really getting a stepping house plan to match the setback line. So you got to kind of step, step, step to get it back there. It does add a little bit of a more modern feel to the house on that side, but it really still is all trying to be in the character of 1950s modern, which is really the character of the neighborhood. So, setback, really a tough little corner site, trying to, as best we can, to fit into the neighborhood pattern. And really, at the intersection, as you come down the street, the two houses that you'll turn, that you'll see, will be the same dimension from the intersection, and then you'll turn. So we feel like we're trying to match that pattern and the character overall. And then the style question really is both, it's really trying to be 50s modern and fit into the neighborhood, and also get in that lot, as you can imagine. And the owners are committed to Oxford, committed to that corner, and making a great house for their children and their family. So, we really appreciate your consideration.
Thanks, sir. Any questions for Mr. Decker? Does anyone else from the audience wish to speak on this case, either for or against? If there's no more discussion, is there a motion on case number 2954 for Part A, the variance for the front yard build-to-line?
I'd like to grant the request for the variance, Part A.
With the staff condition?
With the staff condition, yeah.
There is a motion to approve the variance with the staff condition listed? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, the Part A is granted, is there a motion on Part B, the variance from submittal elements?
Since I did A, I'll also do B, you know, move that we grant the request for B, for the variance, with the staff condition.
All right, there is a motion to grant the variance for Part B, is there a second? You'll flip a coin? All right, all in favor of approving the variance from submittal elements?
It's a good, it's a good sign when we have multiple seconds.
Thank you, sir.
We really appreciate your counsel and consideration, thank you.
Our next case is a public hearing for case number 2955. Oxford Commons Lots LLC has filed a request for final plat approval for the Oaks, Phases 1, 2, 3, 7, 9, 11, 12, and 18, for property located at 875 FD Buddy East Parkway.
This request is for a final plat for several phases of the Oaks. These phases of subdivision are located in the Oxford Commons pud, on the east side of the power cut, on an extension of FD Buddy East Parkway, south of the previously approved final plats for Phases 8, 19, and 27. The proposed phases would be roughly 37 acres with 55 lots sized between about a sixth and about a six tenths of an acre, with areas that are designated for conservation. The proposed lots comply with the dimensional requirements of the underlying zoning, and the density is appropriate to this area of the pud. The phase is in tract N of the pud, and is allotted 386 lots. 300 and, should be 307 lots will remain in tract N if this plat is approved. Tree mitigation and open space is governed by the 2016 tree mitigation variance and the 2019 pud plan that requires at least 14% land preserved tree mitigation, as well as at least 20% open space. Areas are indicated for conservation and open space on the plat, and these areas will require an update of the approved tracking spreadsheet to indicate the location of the area to be dedicated, its size, how it's to be conserved, and whether it's also to be considered part of the tree mitigation requirements. Engineering has provided comments related to access in streets, water in sewer, and stormwater, and staff recommends approval of the requested final plat for the Oaks, Phases 1, 2, 3, 7, 9, 11, 12, and 18, with the nine conditions that are listed in the report.
All right, thank you, Robert. Are there any questions from the commission?
Yeah. In reading through this, it seems like there are a whole lot of questions unanswered with regards to access and streets and stormwater, and so, I guess my base question is, why are we approving the final plat if there's this many questions still pending?
Brandon, would you answer that?
So we do have questions remaining, water and sewer questions, which are technical in nature, and are really about the specificity of the way we want the plan to be for the long term, because when we're approving plans, we really deep dive into a lot of the nitty-gritty details, we notice that this structure, any infrastructure that's going to belong to us, we are, we are very insistent regarding our comments and what we're looking at. And so that is why we take more time with our water and sewer comments regarding access. A lot of this language is the same language regarding previous conversations and discussions regarding Lakewood Hills, that part that was outstanding, and I'd like that language in the report, so that if that history tracks, it'll just hire a say. So you'll probably see that, because I do believe still, that at some point in the future, it's likely the city will react, take that street over, and that connection will be made, and that's just my personal opinion, based on what I've seen with other developments, there is nothing that says that will happen, but I would like that history tracking is taken forward. And then there are other, as development is continuing, there are other active points that the developer is working to establish. And then regarding the questions about the intersection of Buddy East and the Mutu Lakewood, or Mutu Lakewood Hills, I don't remember their name, but that intersection, we're still trying to work for what that will look like, and a future traffic impact study will fall more to what that intersection needs to be, and so, and discussing with the engineer, we have discussed that we want to leave that area open and available, so we can make improvements, so some recommendations of traffic planning. I do believe you'll need to be red light, contracted for your highway intersection or roundabout, in the future, but it's not required right now. And so that's where a lot of that uncertainty will come in, and there's one intersection a lot in here that I mentioned, that we've been working very, we're still working very , but the traffic control on that intersection is going to be, it's a little bit of a skewed angle, which I don't like, our, our work has allowed for it, but I personally, up to a point, I personally don't like them, and so I pushed back on those, and so we're still working very hard on what that would actually be, but that's, that's where that issue is. And then stormwater, I think they brought stormwater in here, and these phases, probably the most complicated analysis of these things that we've been here, and it's not, that it's not suitable, that it's just that it requires a deeper look, and so, we've been working very closely with our engineers to make sure that the initial modeling is set up correctly, because if you want it to be set up right in the front end, so that everybody's moving around, and that house is modeled, and it's fast, and then that way, as we over, we can have a really good room setting. So, but there are restrictions that we put regarding for the case to be categorized for enrollment, but we do believe that anything that impacts a lot size, any of those things, we'll have to rely upon for those for enrollment. So we do play some, that, some of that reflects that the owner wants to go ahead and get through this step now, because if we can revolve this in the next week, or two weeks, or even three weeks, this case revolves issues, they still have the opportunity, they don't have the authority to spend the section, especially if it's short by five days.
Sounds like it's going to be a productive month.
Yes, only with productive months.
Does that answer your question?
Kevin, I just want to make sure that I have this correct, and my main concern is, constructing 384 lots, I'm going to promise that we'll get a traffic study and maybe consider the traffic flow, and then all the existing residents and the new residents are really upset because we approved this, and I guess what I want to make sure is, is that's going to be decided and set forth before the Board of Aldermen can approve it.
And this, this is for a small portion of those 384, so they are potentially for more than 79 units, based on our, or the access requirement.
That's what I thought too, but I don't know, things have changed.
That's, that's where we are, so they, they will not be able to bring another final plat for the order until there are additional establishments, and that's part of the capacity that we're coming forward.
Other questions?
Yeah, look, with the bonds, there's various bonds that are attached to this.
Yes.
What's the, how do they figure out the amount of their bonds, and where are those recorded?
So, the engineer provides an estimate based on the bond, the connection road, and then we're going to get estimates to make sure that we're ready to quantify, and we're ready to call, because they're basically not on, and then they have to pay their estimates right on for 150% of that cost amount to them. And so they provide that, so the previous studies were in force, so they have assurance that the homes that were the upper lots, phases 19, 27, and 7, they're previously approved, they have, we have a line, like, to make sure that road is still good.
And the warranty bond, it carries it all the way through?
The warranty bond, we, once the roadway is constructed, each and after it's filled, we will return a large 150 cent on, and once we do accept the infrastructure, we'll work on that already, we've invested in everything they've done for the station, they have to provide a one-year warranty, as that period is matched with the install of the entire roadway, in case there is some issues that develop, actively detected.
Are there any other questions from the commission? Anyone from the audience wish to speak, the applicant, or others? All right. Hearing no further discussion, is there a motion on case number 2955 for final plat approval for the Oaks, Phases 1, 2, 3, 7, 9, 11, 12, and 18?
Make a motion to approve, subject to staff condition.
I have a motion to approve the plat, subject to staff conditions, is there a second?
Second.
There is a second, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, the plat is recommended for approval. Our next case is case number 2956, Walker &amp; Walker Enterprises LLC has filed a request for special exception as provided in Section 2.6.5, Neighborhood Residential, First Floor Residential, for property located at 2101 Anderson Road.
Thanks. So the applicant seeks a special exception to allow for ground floor residential space, and this will be a small part of the Meadowcrest Development, which we're going to see the site plan for that in the next case. The majority of the land of this development is going to be on a zoned neighborhood residential. There's just a small portion, I'm sure you all saw the map, but it's like a sliver in the southwest corner, that's zoned, traditional neighborhood business, like the adjoining property, whereas the other property to the east is zoned neighborhood residential. The applicant claims that due to the irregular shape of the traditional neighborhood business zoned property, it wouldn't be practical to use it as a commercial space. Staff does find this request appropriate, and we don't think that granting the request will adversely affect the public interest. I'm sure if you guys all saw on the map, it's like a rectangularly shaped property, and this traditional neighborhood business zoning kind of just like cuts it off, so we don't think it makes sense to use that as TMB. So staff's recommending approval of the special exception.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission? And, am I correct, as I understand it, it was zoned, and then property lines changed slightly to give it the rectangular shape, and so now that sliver was created by the property, are you concerned?
I believe so.
Okay. Questions? All right, if there, if anyone from the audience wish to speak? All right, if there are no questions, is there a motion on case number 2956?
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve the special exception, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second, all in favor? All right, special exception is granted. Case number 2957, Walker &amp; Walker Enterprises has filed a request for site plan approval for Meadowcrest Condominiums for property located at 2101 Anderson Road.
Okay, so the subject property, same property here, plus or minus 8.
Okay, so the subject property, same property here, plus or minus eight acres, it was around eight acres, and it's primarily zoned neighborhood residential, and they just received the special exception for the ground floor residential. The applicant proposes to construct 72 dwellings, 18 detached units, and 54 attached units. The attached units vary in size from duplexes to fiveplexes. As nine units per acre are allowed in this zoning district, the 72 units proposed do comply with the requirements of the code. The development proposal requires a total of 204 parking spaces, and the development complies with this requirement and the 25% maximum, providing 255 total spaces. They're proposing 53.8% lot coverage when 60% is allowed in the NR district. The proposed materials, brick and siding, asphalt, chingle roofs, et cetera, are acceptable under the requirements of the code. The plan does include sidewalks connecting to proposed dwellings and to provide access to neighboring properties. In terms of the landscaping and tree mitigation, the landscaping package includes all the necessary parking lot trees and foundation planting. There are a few minor modifications requested during site plan review that are reflected in our recommendation. There is a considerable amount of trees on site that are going to be removed and need to be mitigated. A total of 325 two-inch caliber trees are required to be mitigated, and the developer's proposing to plant 90 trees on site for that mitigation and then pay into the tree escrow account for the remaining 235 trees. Engineering provided comment on access, stormwater, and other services. And staff is recommending approval of the site plan with six recommendations, or six conditions.
Thank you, Kate. Any questions from the commission on the site plan?
Is there any consideration for widening Anderson Road, or is there opportunity for the city to widen? Because on either side of Meadowcrest, you've got vast expanses that are going to ultimately be developed some point.
So any widening of that road, are additional railroads, and that would be something that would have to be taken into account. And it's time to move back to our long range, stretch, protection plan. We not really wish anything in the next 20 years without that. I could be wrong on that. I know that it's 2018, I don't need to.
Because that size of property is about the same size as the two developments right across the street from them. And to the right of this property, which would be on the east side, it's even bigger than this. I'm just, if there's, if there's a lot of a light or a roundabout, or, you know, whatever, because it's coming right there.
And that would be something particularly aggravational for many of these types of properties to develop. And that intersection here is long term, I believe that we would see a route of continuing forward from here to the street area, and that would be, that may be where we would see a big lot of intersections there. And that is, we are pushing that intersection here in the mail, on the addition.
I guess to ask a similar question, when would a traffic impact study be triggered?
It would be triggered by the number of units, and there would be that specialty.
Is number of units and level of surface, right? Or?
Number of units will then back to number of trips that are, when you look at traffic to a commercial channel, the distance would be triggered. Or, or if engineering determines that a traffic impact study, that's a very regard for that. Then we can, with that, but this will be given.
Yeah, I guess what I, the next step I was asking is, how far down the road are we from triggering traffic impact studies with development along that stretch?
I think it will be based on the number of units and then we'll see traffic. I think right now on that road, it's probably, and peak times, I mean, in our peak times, most of our roads are levels are to be torn up. And our peak periods, what we have to look at is outside of that, you know, half an hour in the morning, half an hour at night, and how are things really going? And so that is where they just totally use, both still operating on the company right now. So it's very problematic, and traffic is well, there's that. So peak periods are difficult to make those less.
To that point, and maybe I'm just looking at it wrong, but is there the sufficient buffer between the property line and where that, where, you know, next first line of duplexes being built?
You're saying if we had additional railroads in the future?
I mean, I-
No, I think he's just saying, from the property line to where the built to-
I thought you had to have a certain buffer, I thought you had to have a certain buffer between the property line and where you can start building. And that just to me looks like it's being built like five, 10 feet from the property line.
Now, there's the retaining wall that runs along that between the property line. You're basically going to that?
No. I'm looking next to the, I guess, the south side, it's like along Anderson Road.
They're right on, they're on the, right on the built to minimum, quite a lot. There's a minimum and a maximum, and so they're actually making the minimum. There's not be any closer to streets than that line, and it can't be influenced that. But they're, they're making that.
But it doesn't leave much room for expansion along there, especially if there's a retaining wall. And I don't know what's on the other side of that wall.
The west side, yeah. Are there any other questions?
I guess a lot of us were talking about this. I'm just curious, as you talked about, I mean, at what, at what point does the city acknowledge what's happening and what is continuing, which is more traffic? And I think everybody's getting that here, it's like, when we approve these five projects, we're going to box ourselves in. So I mean, at what point does the city say, hey, look, we're going to have to expand at some point, let's not foreclose that today?
I think that those conversations are considered in our, in those, in our, those are all that, if that was the exception of the conversations of our, our, when we are determining our, our, that, that, that's the point where we're setting our factors on the base. And so I think that is, um, kind of when those are, to look at, and so I think part of that, that's really, really outside of the, the, the plan that you, if you're looking at where, where are, where do people want to go? A lot of our, such facilitation, like you, um, thinking with these people about a lot of our other developments that have the approach, um, to the radical, the multiple, and they're driving the way to charge because of the traffic and trying to push, move away from the traffic in the car country.
Ben, would you like to make any? Ben, would you like to make any comments on engineering? No. Does that answer your question?
I just, I'm curious, like, long-term process. It's an engineering question, maybe even a legal question. I meant, you know, if one of the doctors say, hey, we should kind of take a head guy and start thinking about, we're going to have like Lamar, tough more than that. I meant like, and it's just growing, the problem's growing, traffic is worse and worse and worse, and then, you know, I had a candidate, she was first from the mayor, hey, are you going to expand there? And she's like, nope. Like this, that was some years back, my thing was that they can have all the expense then. And I've been looking around and listening to this, and like, well, we're just going to just let that back up?
And I was saying, let me say, for our visiting areas, our, the Southmore is a great example, as that level of surface of Southmore has been pretty, that's been identified in our, a lot of the transportation plan. So widening Southmore, it's a great project, and those are, have been identified, and I'm saying, short term, old area was, that was identified, those are, that's identified in our plan, as, as we're figuring out right now. And we see daytime, and our, and our, you know, all of these other things, because that's going to be more traffic in work. So those things are, and we, we are funding these, you may know that, so to make those boards and figure out, trying to seek out funding, and so one of the things that our long range plan, with our infrastructure, I mean, how we set that, that's a problem that I'm worried about. But, um, the mayor was, I think, was, was her funding for that, and actually, she's been helping push funding for how we set the four lanes, which will help the city because that was just full traffic on Southmore. So, so there is a lot of our needs for future drawings, for those things that are in our long range plan. And, and the city of our convention is actively working to sort of fund and to do those things based on our needs, or, you know, 10 years out, 20 years out, because that, that long range plan.
Yeah, we'll bring it back to Meadowcrest. So I think the general consensus is just a concern to make sure that the maximum density allowed in the zoning is considered in the transportation plan, right? Okay, good. Any other comments on Meadowcrest? Anyone from the audience wishes to speak? All right. Is there a motion on case number 2957 for site plan approval for Meadowcrest condominiums?
I make a motion to approve, subject to staff conditions.
I have a motion to approve, subject to staff conditions. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay. The site plan is approved, and that takes us to case number 2958. Andy Calicut has filed requests for A, a special exception is provided in section 2.6.7, traditional neighborhood business, first floor residential, and B, a special exception is provided in section 3.5.1.2. C, dwellings detached, districts permitted for property located on Oxfordway West of the Archives.
Okay, so the subject property is located northwest of the Roundabout on Oxfordway, just west of the Archives. Parcel is well over 12 acres, mostly zoned, neighborhood residential with the southeast corner, about three quarters of the major being zoned T and B. The applicant is proposing to construct a housing development similar to the Still, the Stillwater development with 75 attached and 28 detached units. The site plan is currently under review, and these two requests are to facilitate that site plan. For the first request, the special exception to allow first floor residential in a T and B district, the southeast corner of that property is in a T and B district, and the use of ground floor residential is a special exception. While staff believes this is an appropriate location, this corner for ground floor residential, staff would like to see the other three corners of the Roundabout be developed in a commercial manner. The current site plan calls for 15 three-bedroom units, and residential density is calculated at 39 bedrooms an acre in the T and B. So at, so about three quarters of the acre, that gets you nine three-bedroom units as a boost that could be constructed. And that comment has been relayed by the site plan review committee, and applicant will need to address it during subsequent metal. That discrepancy in density does not change staff's opinions, that's an appropriate location for ground floor residential. And staff recommends approval of that request with the finding that the use of ground floor residential at that location will not harm public interest with the condition that approval is for plans submitted, subject to necessary site plan changes. For the second request, the use of detached dwellings in neighborhood residential is a special exception and proposed to form three bedrooms. And then, in this instance, applicant is proposing 28 detached units, all of which are four-bedroom. This is very similar style development to Stillwater, where four-bedroom units were approved in November of '22. Parking for these units will be handled with a combination of garage and driveways, and staff recommends approval of the request of special exception with finding that the four-bedroom units will not harm public interest with the condition, again, that approval is for the plan submitted, subject to the necessary changes per site plan review committee. And without the engineers here, if you all have any questions?
Thank you, Robert. Questions from the commission?
I guess the question, you would like to see them build commercial, but it's not a condition, and we don't have the authority to make that a condition for the special exception.
I'd say allowing flexibility.
Maybe that's a legal question.
I think you can, I think you have the expectation to make that kind of a condition on it, but I think Robert was saying that would maybe be a part of the record, so that way it keeps cases-
They come back with a request, and that, you know, that could be referenced at a later date.
Yeah, I figured you said, I just didn't know if they'd do that.
So I have, I mean, it's just a continuation of what we talked about on the last one. And Ben and I talked about it today. I don't have a problem with, on this corner, this one corner of this. I'm not clear on what it is that y'all, you know, you said, we think this one's good for residential, but not the other three. I don't know what's special about this corner as opposed to the other three, except they came first with it. But the bigger question is, you know, the road, Southmore, and they, all, we're putting more and more and more people down here, and we keep giving these variances for ground floor living where it was supposed to be, commercial in this area. And so there aren't any, so all of those people, every time they need anything, they have to get in the car and go, come this way, and, or go to West Jackson, instead of being able to go to a grocery store, go to a coffee shop, go to a, you know, liquor store, whatever it is, a restaurant. And so we never build any down there, that's not going to happen, the road's just going to get worse and worse, because there is nowhere for them, there is, there's no service industry down there at all, or doctor's offices. And all these students aren't going to all those doctor's offices all the time. So we got to, at some point, I'm saying, we, we got to stick, at some point, we got to stick to the, yeah, we did this for a reason, we put the ground floor for a reason.
Other questions?
I do, kind of the same thing. I mean, part of it is the density, and just because you can build a certain number of units on a piece of ground, is the best use of that. But I don't know that we have the authority to limit that. I mean, number of units that meet space spatial requirements. And I guess we do have the ability to stick with the T and B definitions, not allow for first floor residential, which would blow up the whole plot, right?
Yeah, I think, I think you do have that ability. I mean, if, you know, if the commission is, you know, sees it, and it's in the best interest of the area, that this location remain as, this specific corner inside this development remain as commercial, and have some sort of commercial, you know, constructed, you don't have to grant the special exception that's before you this evening. And they could build it, and they could leave it for a shell development, and somebody could locate there, it could be a coffee shop, it could be a liquor store, some, you know, somebody may, may find that, may find that opportunity as being viable there. I don't know what it does for the viability of the overall development, I don't know if it blows it up if, you know, the ground floor's not, not commercial. I don't know, that's something that the developer would have to speak to, but, you know, it's certainly within your, you know, your right not to grant that special exception, though, Kirk.
Is the applicant present to speak to these concerns?
And I, how, how many, and maybe I'm thinking there's been more, how many in this general area, because, I mean, I myself have gotten this special exception before, I'm not against the special exception. But how many times have we done that in this?
Vicinity?
This whole vicinity so far?
So you had one, not too long, yeah, I think three, sounds about right, you had one over where?
Where the landing, that we just did, that was kind of a swap of-
The location?
I think it was-
Where the YMCA is? Yeah.
Or where it was designated to be at, at one point?
And all the same developer, I think, is part of this issue too.
Bow Ridge.
It's, it's not different people coming to us for different reasons, it's the same developer wanting to do this over and over and over, and therefore, we're not getting any commercials down there.
Not, no, service related commercial, right? Because I mean, you just had the new doctor's office that was constructed, Rayner Eye Clinic, I mean, you did-
Right, I mean, I said there are doctor's offices, but that's not, that's not-
And I think with the landing-
Even the people that are going to go to Rayner Eye Clinic are going to go once a year, if they live right there, you know? That's not going to a store, going to a restaurant, going to a gas station, going, you know?
But if, if the point, if the point of T and B is to get a more walkable, less car-centric area, just building doctor's offices doesn't...
Right, that doesn't help anything.
Right.
And, and I'm not even saying walkable. I'm saying just being able to drive three quarters of a mile, or wherever, you know, to, to stay in your general area without having to go through a whole different area count, just for one, for every single thing you need, you know? That seems to me the point of T and B, and we're not getting that, in my opinion.
Uh, I will say, though, that, um, and, and the applicant's representative might speak better to it, but I do know that when you approved the landing, you did approve, uh, a variety of, uh, I believe it's intended to be service-oriented businesses, you know, so, um, you know, that was recently approved, you know, uh, you might ask when the timetable is on constructing those, um, or Joey might, might speak to that. Um, you know, you do have a couple other, uh, you know, I think everybody, I think all developers in this town would love to have a grocery store anchor their development and their area.
I'll let it, I'll let it be seen, but if you never build it, they will not come. I mean, you gotta build some sometime.
Right.
And the same developer coming back asking for the same thing repeatedly, repeatedly in the same area. It's, it's getting to be a problem for me, it's just not...
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, uh, yeah, so, we have thirty-two thousand square feet of commercial use approved at the landing. Um, that was approved several months ago, no takers so far. Um, we had a plan that didn't get approved, but we were very close on this corner, um, that was called Aspen Heights, I don't think I ever made it in front of you guys, and maybe we had some variances a couple of years ago. Um, we still kind of have that plan, we're not having any takers, you know, we're having a hard time in commercial, seriously. And in, anything that, anybody we talk to wants, you know, South Lamar, they want the traffic, they want to be seen, and we feel that back here, being tucked away is just going to make it hard on any business to try to operate. Now, there's houses in here, but, you know, we have to think that any people that are in here is basically, you know, the Oxford Farms community. Um, we have some trickling from Old Taylor Road, maybe, um, but the commercial's been a really hard sell right now, and we've got projects approved that, we've got two corners on Oxford Way, front of South Lamar, that we've done proposal after proposal after proposal, no takers on the commercial. Um, that's just where we're at right now. So, you know, we obviously would like to, to use the space for residential, um, but that's just, that's where we're at. It's being tucked away, you know, I think anybody that goes in here is going to want to be on the South Lamar side first, because that gets, that's the most visibility for traffic.
There's some questions for the applicant?
If you don't, if you don't have that corner, what, what is the impact to what you're trying to do there?
Nothing. We, we, we basically leave all the other, you know, attached units and detached units behind us, um, and try to figure out what to do with that small corner. Um, I, I think, basically, we've, we've cut the units down to eight, based on the zoning requirements, um, so we're basically proposing now a two-story, kind of four-plex deal, four on each floor, um, and so, if, if we went back to commercial use, that building would probably just go up to three stories and do something with the first. Um, at one point in time, we talked about maybe putting the community gym in there, or the amenities center, or something like that, and it was either last month and the month before, somebody was in here, and we all were kind of like skeptical of people doing that, so we kind of said, well, let's just see what we can do right here. But, I mean, the other three corners have already been planned for years, and we had kind of a unique building on each corner that, so, we just haven't had any takers on.
Any more questions from the commission? Any comments from the audience? All right, hearing no more comment or questions. Is there a motion on part A, the special exception for first floor residential?
I'll, I'll move to approve it with, with, if there were conditions.
Mm-hmm, there's one condition. All right, there's a motion to approve, subject to the single staff condition. Is there a second? All right.
I'll, I'll second.
There is a second? All right, so there's a motion to approve the special exception, and it has been seconded. All in favor of approving the special exception? All right, all opposed? Special exception's granted for three. All right, is there a motion on part B, the special exception for dwellings detached, districts permitted?
I'll move to approve.
All right.
Subject to staff conditions.
There's a motion to approve, subject to the staff condition. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second, all in favor? All right, that's great.
Thank you.
Thank you. That takes us to case number twenty-nine fifty-nine. Larry McAlexander has filed a request for preliminary and final plot approval for Six West Properties Phase One, for property located at Highway Six eastbound, east of Becker Loop. Robert?
Okay. Uh, subject property is one and a quarter acre portion of the parent parcel from which the Go Shine, uh, uh, its car wash subdivision was created on Southside Highway Six. Uh, this request is for another single lot subdivision to facilitate a future development. Uh, as of now, no plans have been received for any development on this property. Uh, the proposed lot meets dimensional environments of underlying zoning, uh, subdivision covenants haven't, not yet been received and will be required prior to the issuance of any permits. Uh, engineering has, uh, a few comments in there, and, uh, staff recommends approval of the, uh, preliminary and final plot for Six West Properties Phase One subdivision with the five, uh, conditions that are listed in the staff report. Apparent engineers here. If you have any questions on that.
Thank you, Robert. Commissioners, any questions? All right, any comments or questions from the audience? Hearing none, is there a motion from the commission on case number twenty-nine fifty-nine for preliminary and final plot?
Oh, quick, quick question. This, this law under legislation may be required pending final review and approval. What, what factors are an impact of?
The, um, it would be based on the, the size, the, the, we believe, because the substantial cost may be very, and it would likely require a lot of, of, of normal dangers to, um, cause. For a site plan, then, we would not require one, so, and we're still working through that part.
Good, okay. Anybody else? All right, is there a motion on case number twenty-nine fifty-nine for preliminary and final plot?
I'm going to still be granting preliminary and final plot.
There's a motion to approve.
Subject to the conditions.
Subject to staff conditions. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, it's recommended for approval. Case number twenty-nine sixty, the city of Oxford has filed a request for a variance from section seven point two point nine point eight point A, freestanding signs, height for property located at Eight Industrial Park Drive.
Yes, this is, um, the city of Oxford Enterprise Center, that building that we're talking about. Uh, it sits on about three and a half acres, and it's, uh, planned to be the new home for the Oxford Police Department. Uh, we've been working, um, you know, diligently with McCarty Architects to transform this space, and, uh, in particular, to redesign the interior, um, and make the, uh, a nondescript building, you know, it looks like an industrial building, it's, um, you know, we're just trans, we're kind of working with the bones that we have, and, uh, transforming it into a recognizable building for the health, uh, welfare, and the safety of the public. Um, the architects are trying to make this building more recognizable, and, um, the primary focus of this work has been to the interior of the building, and one way to make the, uh, the building easier to identify, uh, for the police department is to create an architectural element that's a freestanding, uh, sign on the site, to ensure that the sign is clearly visible from the road. To accomplish this, the city's requesting, uh, the ability to install a larger than typical freestanding sign placed close to the building, not near, uh, not near the road. Uh, it must be considered that the intent of the sign is not necessarily for commercial advertising, but more, uh, branding and, uh, easily identifying this important community use. Uh, the applicant, we, we believe, we, the city believe that the larger sign is needed to assist with visitors and guests to identify where this building is, uh, on Industrial Park. Um, the proposed sign, as you can see here, it just has one word, and it says "police", and it's, uh, those are eight foot, six inch tall, so eight and a half feet tall letters that span about, uh, thirty, just thirty-one and a half feet in length. Um, the, uh, freestanding sign is two and a half feet taller than what is typically allowed, uh, but it's also, uh, it does exceed the sign area requirement, which would be another variance that we, uh, we'll have to come and get. Uh, the location of the sign is about a hundred feet, it's actually more than a hundred feet, closer to a hundred and twenty-five feet, uh, from Industrial Park Drive, and the size of the offset, uh, the size offsets that distance. Uh, staff believes to, uh, that, uh, that this makes it a visually appropriate scale for the building and sufficiently legible from the load, uh, from the road, the legibility is important for this, uh, this use. Uh, the city respectfully asks the commission's consideration for this, uh, unique circumstance by granting a variance for a larger sign, and in keeping with the industrial design of the building, uh, and it will assist residents and visitors with identifying the police department when approaching it from, uh, Industrial Drive. If the commission grants the variance, staff recommends the, uh, two conditions that's listed in the report. I do want to point out one other element that, um, uh, in speaking with Chief McCutcheon about the sign, uh, that it's also, it's designed and intended to be a physical barrier to protect, um, from, you know, any, uh, you know, anything from ramming through that front portion of the building. Um, so, you know, that was one element, because there's a glass storefront that's behind it, that, that was one thing that they did consider, that it is a safety element here as well.
Thank you, Ben. So, just to summarize, tell me if I missed anything, but it, the, the building is being repurposed with minimal changes to the exterior, but as part of that, making it more visually identifiable to the public, using the larger sign, and the sign doubles as a barrier for the elements of the building behind it, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Questions from the commission?
Okay, general question, I mean, what, what constitutes this as a freestanding sign? And I could argue that it's not, that's part of the brick structure along the front of the building, huh?
Uh, I, I don't necessarily know that it's connected to it. I think it's actually separated, uh, from that brick structure. It, I think it has the appearance that it's connected, and I think that's part of it, is to try and keep that as part of that visual facade element, but it is freestanding.
I just wanted to record and differentiate future quit, and, uh, I think this is vastly different than, say, the, uh...
Typical monument sign, or something that we see.
It's almost like an architectural element to it, as opposed to, you know, freestanding sign next to the road.
Right.
It is, but if it's for business, and they have something written like that, we'd be saying, no, it's a sign, so, you know?
Yeah, if it's a beer.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess also, I guess for the record, emergency management, the fact that this is a police and not, it's not a, not a, it's, it's, I think that's pretty important.
Yeah, much like the hospital, the commission, uh, granted a larger sign for, for the hospital because of, you know, the importance of that, making sure that people are able to, you know, find that. I think that's the, the same, you know, same, similar and sincere.
Anyone from the audience wish to speak? All right, if there's no further discussion, I will entertain a motion on case number twenty-nine sixty for a variance from section seven point two point nine point eight point A, freestanding signs.
Motion to approve the staff conditions?
I have a motion, motion to approve, subject to staff conditions, and a second, all in favor? All right?
Thank you.
The variance is granted. That brings us to case number twenty-nine sixty-one, Phase Five LLC has filed a request for site plan approval for the Lamar Phase Five property located at North Lamar Boulevard inside the Lamar T and D.
I think we're all familiar with the Lamar T and D and where it's located. Uh, North Lamar, uh, this phase is a, just over, slightly over five acres, let's call it five acres. Building five A was previously considered as a site plan amendment with, uh, uh, in July of twenty-twenty-two, but this proposal indicates some slight modifications to the building and the site. Uh, the, the proposed site plan is for two multifamily buildings that both front towards Baldwin Drive. Uh, each building consists of approximately, let's just call it fifty-two thousand square feet occupied, uh, of occupied area, and they both provide a total of forty-nine units, but it's a hundred and nineteen bedrooms per building, forty-nine units per building. Uh, both buildings are three stories with a basement, they comply with the overall building height. Uh, parking requirements for the T and D's are outlined in, uh, in the Land Development Code in Section Two. Um, uh, I can tell you that the, uh, this proposal, uh, does require two hundred and fifty-two parking spaces, uh, and, uh, they are complying with, uh, that parking requirement. Tree mitigation is also required here, a hundred and eighteen two-inch caliber trees are required, uh, with this phase. The landscaping plan does not indicate any mitigation trees to be planted on site, however, uh, in discussions with the applicant, they do prefer to plant these trees on site, uh, or within close proximity of this space, and so a condition has been, uh, added to, uh, the conditions of approval, um, prior to the issuance of building permits. Uh, architectural elevations are provided for both buildings, uh, the buildings indicate, uh, primarily a brick veneer, lap siding, and, uh, cementious board. Uh, many of the buildings, uh, I'm sorry, many of the windows do incorporate shutters, and each unit contains a balcony. Engineering did provide, uh, comments related to access, water and sewer, stormwater management, and staff recommends approval with the nine conditions that are listed in your staff report. Happy to answer questions. Uh, the applicant is here, uh, and can answer any questions that you have as well.
Thank you, Ben.
You bet.
Questions?
Dan, I've got a quick, from the call of housekeeping question. Um, I don't understand these, the, I guess, page six, is what I said, um, the general program has some instructions, construction specifications. You talked about how the roadways should be passed in accordance with the state county standards. Can we assume, and I guess have on record, though, that if we're building inside the city limit, it's going to be according to the, to Oxford? Is that automatic, or, that may be a real question. It's going to be...
I think that's a, I think that's a, uh, a, a fair challenge to, to, yes.
Well, I turned that, but if, if, if there were lawyers involved at some point, they might say, well, no, we're under this standard, it's right here. And I just wanted to record, to be very clear, we're under the city of Oxford standards.
Exceptional.
There's money loops across the street from the, that we, that we... Very good. That's all.
All right, other question?
Is, is that, the, the, says Road Alpha, does that lead to Lamar, or, the, in, yes, to lead to Lamar, actually, that's first?
I think Road Alpha brings you to the main street.
I'm sorry, to, to...
Road Alpha brings you to the main street, and then the main street brings you to Lamar.
Okay, okay. And then the Baldwin Drive would extend on down to where the new roundabouts been dug?
I believe.
All of them can, to the main street as well. Okay.
So, indirectly.
I have a question. Um, in the engineering section, Rayanna, there's a discussion of the sediment basin and whether it becomes a permanent detention pond or not, and there's a request in there that staff maintain the ability to shift things around as necessary based on the final stormwater plan. Is that reflected in the conditions anywhere?
I believe that would be in, um, condition one, so, maybe that's a fair revision.
Okay.
But the planning question, I think that would, um, I think that would... But the planning question, I think that would maybe have to carry in condition that is shaped, that's the same, that is the same as the condition that we.
Okay.
Yeah, if I were to say that would be maintained for actual, if that condition went.
All right, and there do seem to be a lot of moving parts in place still, and engineering is comfortable with that?
We, we will get all the moving parts locked on.
All right.
Yes.
Thank you. Additional questions? Anyone from the audience? All right, is there a motion on case number 2961 for site plan approval for the Lamar Phase Five?
So, we grant the approval of the site plan with the conditions.
There is a motion to approve subject to staff conditions, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second, all in favor? Yes. All right, that brings us to the end of our agenda, if there's no new business to bring up, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. A second, all in favor?